Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City Council meeting for the city of Warrenville for Monday, April 7th, 2025. This meeting will be conducted in the traditional in-person format here at City Hall. The public may view the meeting virtually on the official YouTube channel of the city, which you can find on -- public comment will only be available at the meeting. Remote meeting access is for viewing purposes only. We have a roll call, please.
Alderman Ashower?
Here.
Alderman Augustinovich?
Here.
Alderman Berry?
Here.
Alderman Davalos?
Here.
Alderman Krakenberg?
Here.
Alderman Lockett?
Here.
Alderman Widener?
Here.
And Alderman Wilkie?
Here.
Thank you, Julie. As you were able, would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we're going to start this meeting with something that we've been working on for a while, we're very proud of. We have the Chief Operating Officer for Little Friends, Nicole Fox here. Nicole, would you like to come to the podium? I'll meet you up there.
It's presentation mode. Okay, and it's not coming up. Here we go. Let me try again. Sorry, technical difficulties.
That's okay. We're familiar with that.
Yes. Nope. I had it. Alma, are you any better at this? I don't want presenter window. Or you just get to see my notes and I don't have to.
Yeah, let's do.
There we go. Thank you. Thank you for the introduction and the support. As Mayor Bremel said, my name's Nicole Fox and I am the Chief Operating Officer with Little Friends. Thank you guys so much for the time and being here tonight. Over the past year, your -- some of your city officials and members and our members of Little Friends have been working really hard to go through some trainings on how Warrenville can become a little bit more aware of the neurodiversities of its community members and how you guys as a city could support the differences of the populations you guys support throughout the year. And this all started actually back in March of 2023. Little Friends had this idea and through various conversations and meetings and presentations, we got to this point in May of 2024. And what we did is we had an action plan meeting at our site and we got together and we talked about what goals and some tasks that we wanted to outline over the course of the year. And with that, we kicked off the training. So here's everybody who attended that meeting. And we kicked off our trainings in August. And what we did is we provided some basics of autism training and other neurodiversities to over 200 city employees to make everybody a little bit aware of what it might be to see, know somebody with autism, know somebody with a neurodiversity and how you work a little bit better and include them within your community. After that, we provided a little bit more direct support training for the fire department, the police department, some parks. Your guys' parks are amazing, by the way, so we -- Matt has done a great job with that. And then we did some library training with that as well. And through all of this, we've done some walkthroughs and worked on some different accommodations that you guys can provide. So things like sensory bags, some visual supports, how to maybe work with somebody at a traffic stop who may have a neurodiversity and what that will look like. So Little Friends have been along the way with you guys, working very hard to support your community. And that hasn't stopped, that's not going to stop. We're going to be present on April 26th for some Arbor Day, trying to make that a sensory-friendly event. And we hope to continue these different events throughout the upcoming months, years, however long you guys will have us. We want to be here to support you guys. We're also going to be working on some employment training. So if there's businesses within the community that may want to hire somebody with a neurodiversity, not for sure how to work with them, we're here for you. We're here to help and support. I think the library is kind of getting that kicked off for us. We're going to hopefully have two internships within the library program, one, a participant of Little Friends, and another transition student from District 200. It's been a long road. Everybody has worked so hard and so we just want to say thank you so much for the opportunity to be part of your city, to train and work alongside with you guys, so we can provide better supports to everybody in our community. With that, if I could just call up a couple people. So I'm going to, I don't want to butcher names, so Andy Dina, if you can come on up with the fire department, Chief of Police Sam Bonilla, please come on up, Superintendent of Rec and Safety Coordinator Matt Odom, and then our Executive Director of the Library, Jason Stollum, please come on up and accept the Certificate of Achievement. You guys each get your own. Yes. Hold on, you get a different library. Here we go. Thank you. And then Mayor, you get, you're happy to dedicate to the city of Warrenville for your accomplishments. So thank you guys so much. There we go. Thank you.
Maybe Nicole, you could tell folks how many folks you work with at your facility?
Sure.
And the facility is right here in Warrenville?
Yes, the facility is here in Warrenville. We actually have two sites. Oh yes, sorry. I'm usually pretty loud and don't need a mic, so, but I forgot you were streaming as well. So Little Friends, we are at the corner of Deal and West, so we have two main buildings right there. And on a regular basis, we're serving well over 500 individuals and their family and supporting them with intellectual developmental disabilities, autism, and other neurodiversities. We have a staff of over 350 that are supporting these individuals along the way every day with a variety of the programs that we have. We have loved being in Warrenville. Everyone has been so welcoming and we're so excited to continue to be here and watching you guys grow as a community as well.
Well, thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, thank you so much. You guys did all the hard work, so thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Well done, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you.
I see that. We will now go into our public hearing for the FY 2026 budget, so if I could have that motion, please. Alderman Lockett made eye contact again. Big mistake on your part.
It's always me. I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing for the fiscal year 2026 budget.
Second.
Second, okay. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Augustinovich?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Krakenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Wilkie?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Ashower?
Aye.
And Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Thanks.
Thank you, Julie. Excuse me, we'll call on our Finance Director, our esteemed Finance Director, Kevin Dolstrand, to give us an idea of what this is all about, if you haven't been paying attention.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. The proposed FY 26 budget is balanced in accordance with state law. The budgeted revenues, expenditures, capital projects, and personnel issues have been discussed at the various committees, City Council Budget Workshop, and City Council regular meetings since the budget was distributed on February 28th. So far, no changes have been requested on any of the budgeted figures. It's still possible changes could be needed before the budget is presented for final consideration. If that occurs, a memo detailing any changes would be included with the proposed ordinance when it's considered for adoption on April 21st.
Great. Did you want to make the announcement of our latest award now or do you want to do it later?
Sure, I can do it now. Received notice late on Friday that the city of Warrenville was awarded the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting by the GFOA of the United States and Canada. This represents our 33rd year of receiving that award and it represents the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting and the attainment represents a significant accomplishment by any government and its management. So I'd like to thank everyone for their support and from my department for all the hard work that went into preparing that.
And we know that's not an easy thing, to do everything exactly the way it's supposed to be done at such a high level, so congratulations to you and your department. Very well done.
Thank you very much.
Any questions for Kevin? Okay, I guess we can --
Do you want to ask a public comment?
Oh, a public comment, sure, yeah. Any public comment on the budget for next year? Everybody's good? How nice.
This is the public comment?
For the budget.
For the budget.
Right, we're in public hearing right now for the --
There will be public comments.
Absolutely, Kevin. Yep. Okay, could I have a motion then to close the public hearing?
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing for the fiscal year 2026 budget.
Second.
Motion and second. Again, a roll call, please.
Alderman Krakenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Wilkie?
Aye.
Alderman Augustinovich?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
And Alderman Ashower?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're back in our regular session. The next thing on our agenda is public comments. We have several people signed up this evening. I'm not going to impose any kind of a limit on your ability to speak, but I would ask you to be respectful of your neighbors and not go on for too long. And it's perfectly okay to say I agree with the person who talked in front of me instead of just repeating the whole thing. So you're all welcome to come up and say your piece. I'll call you one at a time, so we do it in orderly fashion. Mr. Fred Schlick, please. You are last in, you're going to be first up. Come on up. He wasn't ready. I can shuffle you to the back if you want, Fred.
And I could more easily say that I agree if my neighbor Pam Spivak --
Well, okay. Now she'll have to say she agrees with you.
Good evening and thank you. My name is Fred Schlick. I used to live on Mack Road and I'm here in support of Pam Spivak, a good friend of mine and a former neighbor. And she currently lives on Mack Road. My family owned the farm on the opposite side of Mack Road. That is now part of the DuPage County Forest Reserve. And in support of Pam's opposition to the bicycle path being placed on the north side of Mack Road, I would only support looking into more extensively whether or not it could be placed on the south side, which is forest reserve land now, which was taken from my family via eminent domain and threat of condemnation back in the 60s for the public good and public use in the future. So again, I'm only saying that even though I admittedly don't understand all of the issues that might be involved with federal funding and the bridge work that needs to be done on that Mack Road bridge, I'd only ask that you consider using public land that you already have available rather than, again, invoking eminent domain and condemnation proceedings to take private land for this bicycle path, which may be necessary, but again, it'd be nice if it could be on the other side of the road without impacting private landowners again. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Sinnett?
Hi, good evening. I'm Kevin Sinnett. I live over on West Avenue. That's practically the opposite part of Warrenville. I hardly know where Mack Road is, except that sometimes I need to get to West Chicago and it's, I found it's a shortcut for me. So I'm going to be, I'm going 40 miles an hour, I hope that's the speed limit, down Mack Road, trying to make sure that I avoid the bicycles out there, especially if the mayor's on one of them. And I, so I'm really for a bike path. I have nothing against it that I know of, provided that it's cost-effective. I suppose that's already been a decided deal a long time ago. But the idea of eminent domain, eminent domain is, to me, there's a bush that's blocking people's vision as they drive down, let's, any road that's near a school and there's a crosswalk. And one day, as a child gets hit or almost gets hit, is bad enough for me as someone who's a parent and a grandparent, the decision is made, regardless of whether the homeowner wants it or not, that that bush has to go because people's lives are at stake. As far as I know, no one's making a claim that people's lives are at stake for this. And eminent domain, I thought, was reserved for situations where there's a grave urgency about it. And if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but please correct me, but I would like people to be very careful. And I'd like to hope that the, that the council, as much as I know you may be in support of a bike path, certainly there's nothing that I can think of that would be objectionable to having a bike path. In fact, I prefer to have a bike path because as someone who's now a pedestrian all over the place, I walk all the time. You probably have seen me with my recorder. I do a podcast every day doing a half-hour walk. But I certainly would like fewer bicycles, you know, kind of coming near me on the forest preserve bike paths. So I'd be fine having a superhighway for bicycles over there. However, again, invoking eminent domain, I think is, seems severe to me and I'd just like everyone here to consider that. And I've seen a number of comments, again, I don't live anywhere near it, so in some ways I have no game in this. Horse in the game, I think, is the old saying. But I definitely would like to think that we'd be cautious about making a decision to invoke something like that, to force people to give up their land. And when there is a perfectly good, I mean, as far as I know, the south side is okay, right? It's just the question of, and I read something about rare plants. I would love to know what these rare plants are. I certainly would hate to think that there's going to be an empty space in every jewel across the country of a certain type of apple that's no longer available. What is that? Does anyone know? I've never seen anything specific about it. I kind of find it hard to believe that there's such a rare plant in a Warrenville Forest Preserve. If there is, there is. Please educate us, but I don't know of it and I've never heard any shred of evidence about that. So I would like to be cautious about just, just assuming that the government is in charge of everyone's property. I think that we're, I think we're all sensitive on both sides of the fence because, man, I've got friends on both sides that hardly talk to each other and unfortunately, we all work together every day. And in fact, I'm married to one of them. So it's, I definitely would like a caution about this. I didn't think we needed it when I heard about it the first time. It's why I've never showed up to open my big mouth before about this issue, but I definitely would like to think so, even though, again, I'm so far away from it, it's not going to affect me personally, other than the fact that as a taxpayer, I'm sure I will, I will be asked to pay. I don't, I don't think, as generous as the council might be, that you're going to pay for it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Bob Seibert?
Before I start with my speech for tonight, I'd just like to comment on Mack Road. When I sat at the table, 1993 to 1997, the Chases had property south of Warrenville Road. It was in TIF 1. In an executive session, the developer said they wanted too much money for their property. Under TIF, it's even easier to condemn and take property. Our council was split six to two on most of the issues. On this issue, it was eight zero. We agreed that there would be no condemnation or forcing of individuals to lose their property. This is the greatest gift we have, private property. We have fought many wars about private property. The greatest thing is to have private property that is protected. So I agree with these people. Tonight, I was going to speak on Ordinance 2118, Home Rule Property Tax Limitation. Why was Section 3 of this ordinance included? Something to think about. Section 2 of this ordinance was simply giving back the tax cap to the citizens who already received this under state law. In 2004, the city of Warrenville was spending funds that they didn't have and needed to entice the citizens to vote for a new sales tax, home rule sales tax. The city stated that when TIF 1 ended in 2010, funds from the home rule sales tax would be used to lower property taxes. The citizens did what they were asked, but the city administration did not fulfill its promise. Today, the 2026 budget projects the home rule sales tax to exceed $2.8 million. It's on page 46 of your budget. The city in 2004 stated that one-half the home rule sales tax would come from non-citizens, but I have never seen any verification of this figure. So I'll use the city's figures. This means 1.4 million of home rule sales tax will be taken from the citizens in fiscal This 1.4 million home rule sales tax revenue is about five times the dollar amount to cover the tax cap, 3.4% in the police pension additional payments. That leaves a tremendous amount of dollars still here. And this still, there is another 1.4 million in this fund. And this does not include the city's estimate of $400,000 coming from the new citizens. Does not include the investment outside of TIF 3 and TIF 4 during 2024 that will come not through the budget, but will come in addition to the budget. It's time that the administration fulfills its promise.
Thank you. Pam Spivak?
My name is Pam Spivak and I live at 29 West 630 Mack Road. My neighbors and I are grateful for the widespread support we have received from the community on the Mack Road bike path issue. We continue to be adamantly opposed to the construction of this path across our lawns on the north side of Mack Road. We received offer packets at the end of February and a 60-day notice letters in mid-March. Now, on the city's agenda tonight, there is an ordinance authorizing the acquisition through condemnation of easements and fee simple on our properties. The timing is rather surprising as there is a new Warrenville leadership set to take over within a month. Mayor-elect Andy Johnson will assume office in early May. At the Wheaton League of Women Voters Forum in February, when asked their stance on the Mack Road bike path, both mayoral candidates stated their opposition to the condemnation of private property. It was recently discovered that there was actually a signed intergovernment agreement between the city of Warrenville and the Forest Preserve District of DuPage County to build the path on the south side of Mack Road with funding secured for the project. Despite this, the north side was selected instead. The approved plan was flawed as it was based on a large right-of-way, which was proven to be much smaller than required. The negative impacts to our front yards would be significant. Large easement requirements ranging from 40 to 85 feet, loss of many mature trees and native plants, removal of landscaping, lighting, pillars, extensive grading, and unsightly swells, which are ditches. Construction could last five years, according to the documents in our offers. This is not a simple matter of building a path on a small, flat piece of vacant land or asking us to move our fences one foot. All this major damage compromises our properties, affecting our homes to where we have -- cover the tax cap, 3.4% in the police pension additional payments. That leaves a tremendous amount of dollars still here. And this still, there is another 1.4 million in this fund. And this does not include the city's estimate of $400,000 coming from the new citizens. Does not include the investment outside of TIF 3 and TIF 4 during 2024 that will come not through the budget, but will come in addition to the budget. It's time that the administration fulfills its promise.
Thank you. Pam Spivak?
Good evening. My name is Pam Spivak, and I live at 29 West 630 Mack Road. My neighbors and I are grateful for the widespread support we have received from the community on the Mack Road bike path issue. We continue to be adamantly opposed to the construction of this path across our lawns on the north side of Mack Road. We received offer packets at the end of February and a 60-day notice letters in mid-March. Now, on the city's agenda tonight, there is an ordinance authorizing the acquisition through condemnation of easements and fee simple on our properties. The timing is rather surprising, as there is a new Warrenville leadership set to take over within a month. Mayor-elect Andy Johnson will assume office in early May. At the Wheaton League of Women Voters Forum in February, when asked their stance on the Mack Road bike path, both mayoral candidates stated their opposition to the condemnation of private property. It was recently discovered that there was actually a signed intergovernment agreement between the city of Warrenville and the Forest Preserve District of DuPage County to build the path on the south side of Mack Road with funding secured for the project. Despite this, the north side was selected instead. The approved plan was flawed, as it was based on a large right-of-way which was proven to be much smaller than required. The negative impacts to our front yards would be significant. Large easement requirements ranging from 40 to 85 feet, loss of many mature trees and native plants, removal of landscaping, lighting pillars, extensive grading, and unsightly swells, which are ditches. Construction could last five years, according to the documents in our offers. This is not a simple matter of building a path on a small, flat piece of vacant land or asking us to move our fences one foot. All this major damage compromises our properties, affecting our homes to where we have lived for many years and are passionate about. There is not a single reason nor monetary offer that would convince us to agree to this drastic proposal, as arguments do not favor a north-side location in the least. From a fiscal responsibility point of view, this current design results in enormous needless waste of taxpayer money due to high reconstruction and utility relocation costs, lawyer appraisal, court fees, and land acquisition expenses. I am sure residents would take a dim view of wasteful spending. There are other alternatives that can and should be considered, keeping in mind that public trails belong on public land. I hope the applicable parties realize the truth of these statements, give the matter serious thought, listen to their constituents, and arrive at a common sense solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Mitchell Adamus?
Good evening. My name is Mitch Adamus. Just a quick comment in regards to somebody's previous comments over there. I've been doing restoration for 45 years, ecological restoration in prairies, woodlands, and wetlands, and I did a floristic survey of our side of the road property versus the other side of the road property. This is a book called The Plants of the Chicago Region by Swink and Wilhelm. The floristic quality on my property alone is rated a 26, and I was being very generous with the rating. On the other side of the road, it came out to be a 6. It is a mowed, grassy, windy, dandelion-ridden right-of-way where we would like to see the path built. Anyhow, to get back to my main body of my talk here, it is amazing to me, my neighbors, and over 650 people who signed our petition, that we are still dealing with this incredibly ill-conceived attempt to put a path on our properties, when a totally logical, highly desirable alternative exists right across the road. We have repeatedly debunked all arguments for north-side alignment. What is disturbing is that some of our past and present alderpersons won't even show a token attempt to represent their constituents. As far as I can tell, we are still living in a representative democracy not beholden to a monarch or autocrat. A nearby resident described this situation as "another jewel in his crown." You can stop this now and cut the losses to the taxpayers, or we will see you in court where we will win at even more taxpayer expense. Condemnation is enacted when no feasible alternative exists. Anybody with a sense can see that a far better route exists on the south side, not to mention that a need for a path has never even been demonstrated. The city of Warrenville and the Forest Preserve District are not even trying to do the right thing. Have the courage and decency to shut this down. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Debra Renary? Did I have that right?
Good evening. My name's Debra Renary. I live at 4 South 120 Curtis Avenue, and obviously Warrenville. I have been following this situation, this issue, for years. I am a bike rider. But every time this comes up, I've attended some of the Forest Preserve meetings when they've discussed this north and south. The stuff that the Forest Preserve said had such weak standing, but who's going to fight them? That's county government, and very few people did fight them. And so it just seemed like it just let little Warrenville deal with it. We can push them around, they'll pay for it. They were paying for it, they were getting grant money, and that's all well and good, and we need to repair the bridge, and I totally get that. But in my heart, I think about my own property, and I have three acres that borders a school, and we've had in a sort of a park area, and we've had some situations where things that went on bordering our property that were totally not going to be legal, that we had to like, "Wait a minute, what are you guys doing? This is our property, that's an easement, you just can't go in there and do that." And I look at these poor people, and someone today on Warrenville residents, because there was a lot of cheddar on there, referred to these houses as mansions. Have you guys drove by these mansions over there? These people have owned these homes for years and years, and they're not mansions. They have a nice piece of property, and they bought that nice piece of property intending to keep it that way, just like all of us do. We don't expect something else to happen to our property when we bought it for one purpose, and then somebody comes along and says, "You know what? I want to put a baseball field on the back corner of your property, and we're just going to take it from you." I mean, a bike path, I went through eminent domain, like, for a few hours today, trying to find out where they've taken, eminent domain had taken property for a bike path. I couldn't find it. It's probably there, if I spent another day, maybe I would find that information, but I didn't. So here we are again. I never thought it would get to this point. I never thought the city of Warrenville, my alderman, would think that this is a great idea, to take people's property. I don't know what you've all spent fighting this, and I can only imagine what you've spent. I mean, it's just saddened, it just saddens me to see the amount of craziness that has gone on here. Being a bike rider, I've actually ridden that. I have a friend who lives in Maple Hill, and we kind of meet up, and she has to come down Mack Road, or I have to go up Mack Road, down Williams, up Mack, and sometimes we go across and we go into Fermilab, which is kind of a nice ride, but somehow we navigate Mack Road. And I want to tell you, there's not a lot of people riding on Mack Road. Now, maybe the bike path will draw more on? I don't know. I don't know if, I've tried to find out if there's a study, how many people are going to use this bike path. I couldn't find that information, and no one has been able to answer that question for me. In any event, I think that this is a bad idea, just a bad idea. It sets a bad precedent, it makes many of us just sick to our stomach thinking that our fellow, our fellow Warrenville citizens, that you guys would have no problem doing this to them. I don't know how you'd all feel about someone grabbing, it's more than 10 feet, that's a whole nother story. And the whole thing on the Forest Preserve and the plants, oh yeah, I listened to the Forest Preserve, the 100-year oaks, and the dog park. I mean, they have so much land over there, they can back up the dog park. Maybe the path can go, actually go, would be really nice of being a bike rider, to actually take that path around the dog park. Oh, would that be a nice path? Very scenic, too. And then they own more property, because they have a nursery and tree farm on the other end. Maybe we can go through our bike path through there and then connect over to, into, you know, Blackwell. Anyway, talked long enough. I hope you vote no on this. I think it's just a, it's just, it's a bad idea. Give the money back if you took the money. If you're going to get the money, tell them you don't want the money. Put the money towards something else. They allow you to do that, they probably won't. And just call it a day. Cut your losses, let them, they've spent enough, you've spent enough, and just move on to the next important issue that affects our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mary Lou Worley?
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Bremel, council, staff, residents. My name is Mary Lou Worley. Mayor Bremel, thank you for your many years of elected service at the city of Warrenville. You have been a diligent champion. I know you will continue to be. It's a terrific community. I especially like Vivian's Water Tower, standing proudly next to Little Naperville's. I live in Naperville, and I love biking the beautiful, safe trails of your broad, inclusive community. Trails along the west branch of the DuPage River, trails through the neighboring forest preserves, St. James Farm, 595 acres, and Blackwell, 1,366 acres. Trails built with public input partnerships and community approval. Build the much-needed Mack Road bridge. Go for it. Do not build the bike trail extension on the north side of Mack Road. So much has been learned since the project was first introduced many years ago. Stormwater engineering, land rights, budget bouncing, easement desires, and now, after the recent election, new leadership. Please value the fresh eyes on the board. Take a breath, it's time to pause. It's time to pivot. There are many more creative and safe approaches to trail connections yet to be discussed, discussed in public here and elsewhere. Surely, there's a more fun way to connect a beautiful, safe trail link to Route 59 within 1,366 acres of public land, land already acquired, as we've heard from Mr. Schlick, through condemnation of private property. Knock on your neighbor's door, Warrenville's good neighbor and partner, the Forest Preserve District of DuPage County. The actionable opportunity before you tonight is Agenda Item 7-A. Table it, if you must, but please do not approve Agenda Item 7-A, authorizing and directing the city administrator to cause the filing and prosecution for condemnation proceedings to take your citizens' private property. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone out there who didn't realize they had to sign up who would like to speak? Mike Kaufman?
I'm also against condemnation of non-essential use property, and I'm just, if there's for some reason that you can't put it over on the Forest Preserve, why can't you use a thickened or widened road as you use on Batavia Road? It'd make more sense, wouldn't it have to bother anybody? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to official and staff comments. I have nothing to add this evening. Clerk? Treasurer? Okay. Alderman? Very good. City Administrator?
Thank you. Just a notification to everyone that we are going to have a reception for retiring Mayor Bremel and the re-elected officials and newly-elected officials before the May 5th City Council meeting here, right outside council chambers. Again, that's Monday, May 5th, from 5:30 to 7:00 before that meeting takes place. I also wanted to take a quick minute to acknowledge the two staff people that were leading the Little Friends Initiative, and that was Assistant City Administrator Morgan and Communications Coordinator Paula Craft. I also want to acknowledge our Inclusion Diversity Equity and Awareness Committee Chair Amy Kraschel. That effort has been going on for two years, as you heard from Little Friends, and those folks really took the lead on getting that accomplished, so well done. Thank you.
Okay, I just lost my internet. It's back. This reception, will there be pizza?
There will be light refreshments, I'm not sure what that entails just yet.
Just asking, just planting that seed, just in case, you know. It is a pretty special reception. All right, thank you. City Attorney? Okay, thank you. We'll move on then to the approval of the agenda this evening. Alderman Widener, would you like to make that motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the agenda for the April 7th, 2025 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second. Second by Alderman Davalos. The comments, questions? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Wilkie?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
And Alderman Augustinovich?
Aye.
Thank you. The agenda is approved as presented. We have several sets of minutes that need approval also this evening. Alderman Widener, would you like to make that motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the March 15th, 2025 Budget Workshop. I move to approve the minutes of the March 17th, 2025 City Council Regular Meeting. Move to approve the minutes of the March 17th, 2025 City Council Closed Sessions 1, 2, 3, and 4. And finally, I move to approve the minutes of the March 24th, 2025 Public Safety and Finance Committee Meeting.
Second. Second by Alderman Kruckenberg. Any discussion? Again, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed?
Motion carries. The minutes are approved as presented. The consent agenda for this evening, Item 6A. Accept Plan Commission Recommendation, waive second reading, and pass Ordinance 02025-15, approving a final plat of subdivision, special use permit for a planned unit development, and a final planned unit development plan for Cerny Park, 28 West 415 Forestview Avenue. B, accept Plan Commission Recommendation, waive second reading, and pass Ordinance 02025-16, approving a special use permit to allow an open sales lot at 2 South 781 Route 59, Unit B. C, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation and pass Resolution R2025-24, approving a three-year agreement with Rogue Reductions LLC for an Independence Day fireworks display in 2025, 2026, and 2027, in the annual amount of $28,000. D, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation and approve the 4% FY 2026 market-based increase for non-Unit employees as included in the proposed FY 2026 budget. E, accept Public Safety and Finance Committee Recommendation and approve a 7.5 water rate and a 2.5% sewer rate increase effective May 1st, 2025, and direct staff to work with the city attorney to prepare code amendments needed to authorize this recommendation for consideration as part of an April 2025 City Council Meeting Agenda. F, receive and file minutes of the Inclusion Diversity Equity and Awareness Commission Meeting, held on January 21st, 2025. G, receive and file minutes of the Tourism and Arts Commission Meeting, held on February 13th, 2025. H, receive and file draft minutes of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals Meeting, held on March 20th, 2025. I, receive and file report of invoices paid up to April 2nd, 2025, in the amount of $184,932.77. J, authorize expenditures for invoices due on or before April 19th, 2025, in the amount of $285,723.07. K, receive and file report of Chase Commercial Card expenditures for the month of March 2025 in the amount of $18,024.55. And L, receive and file wire transports report for March 2025. Alderman Widener?
Yes, thank you. I move to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Bremel.
Second. Second by Alderman Kruckenberg. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Wilkie?
Aye.
Alderman Augustinovich?
Aye.
And Alderman Kruckenberg?
Aye.
Thank you. Julie, we'll move on to the regular agenda. Would someone like to make the motion for Item 7A? Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion to accept staff recommendation, waive second reading, and pass Ordinance 02025-17, authorizing the acquisition by the city of Warrenville of certain easements and fee simple portions of the properties located within the city at 29 West 530 Mack Road, 29 West 606 Mack Road, 29 West 630 Mack Road, and 29 West 660 Mack Road, West Chicago, Illinois.
Second.
Second by Alderman Wilkie. Before we discuss this, I'd like to have a short presentation by our Assistant Committee Development Director to give us an idea of the history of this and how carefully and honestly how difficult the decision was for us to do this. Some of that information would be helpful to folks while they're listening. So, good evening. Christine, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Nine years ago, the city began the process of analyzing solutions, gathering public input on, and planning for the construction of a bike path, safe pedestrian and bike access along Mack Road from Route 59 to the Forest Preserve's McKee Marsh, which access is located on the north side of Mack Road. During this process, there was a very detailed alternatives analysis that analyzed three different alternatives, north side bike paths on street as well as south side. The north side of Mack Road was recommended by consulting engineers, the Forest Preserve District of DuPage County, Winfield Township, and city staff. The following three factors were considered in deliberating this location of the path. The following three factors were considered in deliberating this location of the path that are the most important reasons why the north path was chosen. One is safety. The posted speed limit on Mack Road is 40 miles per hour. The average daily traffic count on Mack Road is about 3,000 vehicles per day. The Blackwell Connector Trail, which is within the McKee Marsh on the north side, is just east of the bridge, and there's also a sidewalk on the north side of Mack Road that is west of 59. A path on the north side would discourage a mid-block crossing without a signalized intersection. If you've ever been on Mack Road, you know that the cars on Mack Road do go more than 40 miles per hour. Between the hours of about 8:00 and 5:00, this results in about three cars per minute, which is a significant amount. That would be very dangerous to cross. Environmental preservation. As many of the residents have stated, there is a Class 4 Sensitive Highly Protective Forest Preserve District property on the south side that contains high-quality natural area, habitat, and woodlands in that area. Placing the path on the north side preserves this natural area. And then finally, cost savings. Placing the path on the north side avoids the expensive reconfiguration and reconstruction of the forest preserve's dog park and boat launch. This work would not be eligible for any grant funding, and the Forest Preserve District is not in favor of the path on the south side of the road. A path on the south side of the road would also require more fill in the floodplain due to downgrade and lower elevations. The river flows obviously from north to south. The south side has lower elevations. More fill requires more extensive design and construction, thus increasing the cost for the project. Finally, proceeding with the path on the south side would likely sacrifice the $400,000 in grant funding that the city currently has due to the federal requirements to protect and preserve public lands when another option is available. So as part of this process, and during the land acquisition phase, the city is required to acquire temporary construction easements for construction, permanent easements, and fee simple property to construct the project. In January 2024, the land acquisition offers, packages were sent to the six Mack Road property owners that are affected by these easements and fee simple property. Two of the four, two of the six property owners began negotiations with the city and came to an agreement. Eventually, the remaining four property owners at 29 West 530, 29 West 606, 29 West 630, and 29 West 660 Mack Road advised through their attorney that they would not engage in negotiations. And then, again, in February 2025, the city obtained additional appraisals and set an updated land acquisition offers to the six property owners. Again, the city reached negotiation agreement with two of the property owners, and the remaining four property owners that I had previously named remained unwilling to negotiate. Staff understands that this project is very difficult for individual property owners. However, the city does have to consider the project as a whole and for the greater good of all residents. As this project remains a priority and has been since the bikeway implementation plan was put together to address safety and access concerns on Mack Road, Ordinance 2025-17 was prepared to authorize an initiation of condemnation proceedings for these properties. Staff is in support of this ordinance.
Thank you, Christine. Any questions or comments from the council? Alderman Davalos?
Yeah, I would just like to say a few things, really just from my point of view. But first of all, I'd like to thank you all for being here. It's really good to do person-to-person, even though there's lots of ways to communicate with us. I think it takes time to come and stand up here and to talk about this very, very multi-layered situation. I'll speak for myself, but I know a few, in fact, a lot of the Alderman thought at the beginning, there would be no question about going on the south side. That was a logical way, until you dig down. And Christine Hawking has explained a lot of the things. A lot of us, first of all, we don't, somebody was talking, I think one of you earlier talked about public land that's already available. Well, the south side land is not public land. It's owned by, as most of you out there know, by the forest preserve, by the county. And they, for the reasons that were stated, they are never going to let it be built on the south side. And the staff has negotiated, maybe some of you have spoke at county meetings, some of us have spoke at county meetings. I know that the mayor in years past has dealt with some of the officials over there, and they are not budging on this. So, that option actually just can't happen. And the other big thing is, we just can't have, as Christine Hawking said, a second crossing over Mack Road. It's just, none of the traffic people are going to let that happen. So, the other issue that we all operate on, and somebody talked about representative government out there, and you are people that we have representative government with, that's true. But as Alderman, we also have representative government with the rest of the community. And this is one of the umbrella issues here, is that in every strategic plan we do, in every public meeting we have, one of the top things people want is they want to be able to walk or bike or take their strollers or whatever safely to all the different places around, to Fermilab, to Blackwell, to McKee's Marsh. And we have been working on this for years and years and years. The Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission has worked hard on this to make this happen. You've seen along Batavia Road is our bike lanes. There's places all over that as we redo roads and different things, we are trying to make a safe route around this whole community to get people, both sides of 59, you know, to the other places. So, part of this path on the north side is a much improved pathway. It's not signalized, but there are lights and buttons to push to get across 59. And somebody also out here asked, well, who's going to use this? Well, we get a lot of concern in people that want to be from Summer Lakes and Fox Hollow and that north side of, the west side, I guess, of 59, want to get over to Blackwell, McKee's Marsh. Some people want to get to Fermilab, which isn't this path, but we're trying to work on a path with the county from Maple Hill down across so those folks can get to Fermilab and around. So, that's the overall issue that we all have up here, is how do you give representative government to the whole, to the whole community? It does not mean that you do not have a right and to be talking about this and to be upset about this and to not want this. But also, somebody talked a little bit about eminent domain. There are very, very strict rules about eminent domain. So you can't start putting up shopping centers and stores and housing developments and none of that stuff. It has to be for the general public good. And so, or else you never, you never get it. It's serious to all of us. It has never happened, to my knowledge, in Warrenville. We've come very close, but it's never happened. And so, I just want to tell you that all of us have been discerning this, thinking about it, gathering information, listening to people, going over there and looking. I actually live over there, and it is a very unsafe road. I have little, I had little kids, a long time ago, and getting their big wheels and bikes down from Williams Road and then down to get into Blackwell was horrible. And even now, somebody said, there's 3,000 cars at over 40 miles an hour, and it's just not a safe place, and yet, on both sides of it, of Mack, are these places people want to get to. So, the alternative at this point is either to do nothing or to do it on the north side. And that's been the discernment here for a couple of years, going back and forth, closed session, all of us talking. This is not easy for any of us, and each person has discerned and tried to figure that out their own way. And I guess I just want to say, I want to tell you that because it is a tough thing, even though you are being compensated for that land, you're going to lose trees, people have brick pillars, there's landscaping, there's all kinds of things. And we hope that the compensation looks fairly to you. We've, I think, used some of your appraisers, and we've redone it so that it's extraordinarily fair. Doesn't mean that that will change your mind, but I just want people to know that we don't take land. People are fairly compensated, and even if this condemnation goes through, you will still be fairly compensated. That's a done deal.
No. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You had your opportunity to speak earlier. Please, we're doing business right now.
So, I just wanted, from my point of view, as one Alderman, I just wanted to say that, so you understand whether you're happy or not happy with how this comes out. We have tried to do a good job, and a lot of us worked really hard to try for the south side. It just isn't, it's not possible at all. So, anyway, thank you for coming, and I've appreciated your comments. It's made me think about a few things.
Additional comments? Been a long road. JD? JP? Sorry?
Definitely thought long and hard on things to say here. I mean, I do appreciate the staff, all the work they've done in trying to find something to help the residents. But I wrote a little lengthy thing. Normally, I don't talk a lot about things, but this is definitely something I am passionate about when it comes to taking of land. So, you know, we have a decision here that, you know, strikes at the heart of what it means to own property in our community. The proposal before us creates a potential to use condemnation and ultimately eminent domain to seize private land for a bike path. It's not just a question of recreation or convenience, it's a question of principle, of fairness, and of the sacred rights we hold as American. I stand before you here to urge this council to reject the use of any type of eminent domain condemnation, not because I oppose bike paths, but because I oppose the dangerous precedence this sets for every homeowner, every business owner, every family in our city. I've long stated that I agree with letting the city work to purchase this land and work with the residents rather than against them. This, of course, is our best course of action. Now, let me take you back to 2005, when the Supreme Court decided Kelo versus the City of New London. I actually lived across the river from New London for a few years while in the Navy. So, in this case, the court ruled that the government owned the property and handed over to a private developer, all under the guise of vague public purpose, jobs, taxes, economic growth. The majority said it was fine as long as the government could imagine some benefit. But Justice Clarence Thomas saw through this. In his powerful concurring dissent, he warned us that this loose standard turns the Fifth Amendment's promise of public use into a blank check for government overreach. He said, and I quote, "The court has erased the public use clause," replacing it with a rule that lets the government take your land for any reason it deems legitimate. That's not what the framers intended and is not what we should accept here today. Now, let's talk about the bike path. Now, I'm all for healthy living and outdoor spaces. None of us dispute the value of a good ride or walk with family. But is this bike path a necessity? Is it so critical that we must take land, trees, property, just to build it? I say no. We already have roads, sidewalks, and trails that serve our community well. This isn't a highway to connect our city, a school to educate our kids, or a hospital to save lives. It's a bike path, a nice to have, not a must-have. And yet, under the Supreme Court's ruling in Kelo, we're told that we can't take someone's property for it as long as we can dream up some indirect benefit. Tourism, maybe a boost in local shops to benefit a hobby. Justice Thomas saw this coming. He warned that this kind of thinking lets the government seize land for any conceivable benefit, no matter how flimsy and leaves property rights in tatters. Now, think about what it means for us. If we greenlight this, what's next? What's next? A dog park? A coffee shop? Taking a block of homes to build a downtown or Riverwalk? A private developer's shiny new project, all dressed up as public purpose? Thomas pointed out that the real cost of this decision, when the government took land for urban renewal in the mid-20th century, it was often the poorest, the most vulnerable, who lost their homes and properties, many with nowhere to go. Now, we're not kicking anyone out of their homes now, but it's a history that has targeted those who cannot fight back. Now, here's, here we risk the same pattern. This is an area that was annexed into Warrenville not too long ago. If back then they knew what would happen now, would they have fought even harder? Now, who's going to be bearing the financial burden for this bike path? That's not a critical necessity. That's the citizens of Warrenville. Now, property rights aren't just for the wealthy, they're for every one of us, and they're under that threat when we let government stretch public use this far. Now, I've looked into examples out there. In Ohio, a park district tried to take land for a bike trail, and the landowners fought back, asking why their property had to be sacrificed for recreation. In Oregon, a county pushed eminent domain for a bike path, and the owner said no, because it wasn't necessary, because there were other ways to get it done. These aren't just isolated cases, they're warnings. Justice Thomas's words ring true. If we let public purpose mean anything, we protect nothing. Now, 10 years ago, I worked as a legislative aide for a state representative. I asked when the state of Illinois was starting to use the Kelo decision as the foundation to rewrite our laws and how this would affect the citizens of Illinois and how we would ensure property rights in our state. I was assured that the arbitrary taking of land for projects would not be the guide for public projects, but would be a rare exception. Yet, here we are in my hometown, talking about potentially using the courts to take land for a project and strip property rights away for a luxury, not a necessity. Now, our city staff has done an incredible job trying to figure out a solution and offering a fair compensation for the use of the land and the path. But it still comes to the point where I cannot justify the notion of taking land by condemnation, no matter how big or small, when it is not vital to the people of Warrenville. I say no to any use of eminent domain for a bike path, and let's honor the original meaning of public use, land taken only when it's directly used by all of us, for something we truly cannot do without. Let's demand proof of the necessity and that there's no other way before we take it from the people, and send a message that in this city, property rights still mean something, that we won't let them be chipped away for every nice idea that comes along. And I yield back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Anyone else? Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Wilkie?
Aye.
Alderman Augustinovich?
No.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
No.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
And Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you for the spirited discussion. Thank you for coming tonight. As staff mentioned earlier, this has been worked on for nine years. We've done our best to accommodate everyone that we could. It is recognized that this public purpose is something that every community is trying to do, is have more paths and more ways for people to get out without having to be in their cars. So, I'm sorry that you don't agree with that, but we feel we're doing the best for the community. We have one other item under the regular agenda, Item B. Would someone like to make the motion to put that up? Alderman Lockett?
I'd like to make a motion to offer first reading, Ordinance 02025-18, adopting the City of Warrenville Fiscal Year 2026 Municipal Budget.
Second?
Okay. Is anyone opposed to that? Seeing as we've already been explained what it's all about, we've had all these meetings, so do we need to vote on that?
Yes.
Okay. Please.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Augustinovich?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Lockett?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Kruckenberg?
Aye.
And Alderman Wilkie?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. We have nothing under unfinished business, under new business. I would just like to congratulate our new mayor, Andy Johnson, who will take over May 5th, and also congratulate Alderman Berry, Alderman Berry, Davalos, Lockett, Widener, and Treasurer Goodman and the city clerk for being reelected as well. And remind everybody that there'll be a reception, that we'll have pizza to celebrate all these wins. What's the date again?
May 5th.
May 5th, so you're all welcome. Thank you for this evening. May I have a motion adjourned? Alderman Kruckenberg?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.